All right, we will call this meeting to order. Welcome, and we will begin with our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. I am not Ann Meyer. I am Julie Kuhnheim, and we're going to have a great meeting tonight. All right, well, let's start with our recognitions. We have a lot of board bravos. Tonight's been a very busy time of year and a lot of things going on. So I think we'll share just those in general, and then we have a specific group, too, we want to recognize. So if anyone would like to share bravos, great things they've seen happening in the last month.
Yeah, by that.
Well, we had, so we were talking about it a moment ago, so we had, our wrestling team had regionals this past weekend. And so I believe all the girls qualified for state, so five of them, is that right? And then, um, and two champs. And then we had a regional champion, Ryland Pinkson, on the boys team, and four others qualified for state. So great showing for a team that's been in place for a couple of years, that are doing a great job. So and Mr. Robinson and I and several others were at the meet this past month, and just an outstanding showing there, too. And a great crowd for support them.
Yeah, a lot of cheerleading things. The high school cheerleaders finished ninth in the nation. They were, they were competing down in Orlando over the weekend. Middle school cheer had their final NKCAA competition and won everything that they were in. So they killed it. Was it Moyers Got Talent Saturday? It was very entertaining and hilarious and good, so a couple of happenings there.
The Matilda, the musical, was a few weeks, it feels like there's been so much happening, and that was several weeks ago. But congratulations to all the participants and that. And then I had the, got to catch some of the middle school academic team at regionals this weekend. And they, they ended up fourth place, and they have a sixth grader that gets to advance to state in the written assessment. So that was exciting for them.
And the rumor on Matilda was highest grossing show, is that right?
Oh, yeah.
At that time, it was the attendance record for Texas.
I know, SEC LA, we had students competing at regionals, and a number of them that won, and will be advancing to state. One of them, I mean, I know very well, so congrats to her. What else do we have, Mr. Robinson?
Well, did we host our first archery tournament?
Yes, and over 400 archers, I think.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
And also their parents' night, Alan's coming up on March 2nd at the Highland Country Club. That was a good time last year.
Get your tickets before they sell out.
Yeah.
So many things going on in the winter, which is good when the, when the sky is gray. We have our, our kids performing in many, many ways. So wish best of luck to our spelling bee representatives. We had George Whitehorse, Louis White, and Genevieve Dine Line will be representing us in the, in the regionals. Our mock trial team, or regional champs, they'll be going to state. We may have a couple of We the People doubling up here for mock trial, is that right? We're going to recognize our national competitors for We the People here in just a few minutes, so we'll save that one. So we talked a little bit about that. KMEA, we had all state representatives this past weekend. Again, we celebrated, Ms. Vanda Poole is the elementary teacher of the year for the entire state last, last month. So that was great. We'll recognize KMEA All State next month. The middle school forensics team were regional champs, and their coach, Bethany Howard, was the regional coach of the year. And so they're rocking that out. Best of luck to, to multiple winter sports. Best of luck to swim, dive at state coming up. We mentioned wrestling. I know basketball will be starting very soon, and it also means that spring sports start today, actually. The week or night was the first one. Johnson, I think, was the district champion for, for their academic team. Governors, and governors come there, so that was super exciting. And also, we talked about kindergarten circus, I think, has come up. We got a lot of Moier people out here. It comes up February 29th. And also another update is the 15th is SRO Appreciation Day. So we should be very thankful for, for school resource officers and the collaboration we have with the city. So tons of stuff going on. It's always exciting to start our meetings this way and really celebrate all the great things in the form.
Yeah, that's super, super great, and to see all the different things, too. I think it's really nice, talk about academics, athletics, all the extracurriculars. I think that's a great representation of what our students and community are all about. Speaking of great reputations and tradition, let's recognize some people.
If we could welcome the We the People team up to the, to the front. We have Ms. Megan Boyman-Hennies. So we're going to ask Ms. Boyman-Hennies to speak a little bit about this team and some of, some of their accomplishments. What I can tell you is, I've, I've had the absolute pleasure to not spend as much time as I want to in there. That, that's not the pleasure part, but the times that I'm in there, this group is, is absolutely amazing. And so we're really looking forward to hearing about that. But they will represent Kentucky in the national finals coming up soon. And so Ms. Boyman, do you want to speak a little bit about the team and introduce, or let them introduce themselves?
Yeah, I don't want to speak for them. Especially when the whole class is about public speaking skills, right? Skills to use before nationals. These are seven of our 21 seniors who are taking We the People, which is a constitutional law class. And this year, for the first time, also an AP less government and politics class. So it's kind of like two classes in one, which is even more remarkable. And they are part of our team that won the state competition on January 30th. They did an excellent job, and then we will be competing at the national competition right after spring break from April 12th through April 15th. If you're not familiar with the program, I know the board members are, because you hear me wax poetic about it as much as I humanly can. The, the competition asks students to become experts in a certain aspect of constitutional law and history, and then apply it to historical and contemporary problems. So each of these seven students focus on different subject areas, different periods of American constitutional law and history, and are some of the brightest minds trying to solve the biggest problems in our country, which always makes me feel very good when I see them graduate, knowing that Highlands is putting forth some of the best possible citizens that, that we can. So I'm going to go ahead and let them introduce themselves.
Hello, I'm Bradley Gronick.
Lucas Tinkler.
I'm David McJim.
I'm John Doherty.
Paige Barber.
I'm Jen Dennis Senior.
And I'm Reagan McFrederick.
There we go. Any questions from the board?
Can you guys tell us what your units were, that EU?
Um, yeah, we're, are, we're unit six.
Okay.
And one of the representatives who we forward, the other three people that are in my unit are Coen, Desner, Will, Aldridge, and Henry Campbell.
I'm representing unit one, We the People, Louis, I think, and Karen Humpherson, we have other four.
Oh, I like that.
I'm representing unit five, and a lot of our members in, so I'm ready.
Okay, so.
My only question relates to substantive due process.
I was going to say, it's the equal protection under the law. Let's talk 14th Amendment.
What's crazy is that this year, there are no 14th Amendment questions. It's not weird, it's like, no.
Thank you. You guys are the ones who teach the boys and Mr. Robinson, so you're surrounded by, so.
Legends of the world.
Well, we want to congratulate you and, and thank you for representing the Commonwealth of Kentucky in, in Washington, DC. It will be a tremendous experience. Enjoy it quite a bit.
Thank you for your continued support as well.
We also have state championship t-shirts for all of you.
They're very excited for the t-shirt, yeah.
Well, and Fort Thomas, it doesn't happen if you don't have a t-shirt. So, good luck to you guys as you prepare for your, get your new questions and prepare for nationals. That should be a great trip. All right, some more recognition of great and wonderful people in our district, which I will turn over to Mr. Robinson to share our Tradition of Excellence Awards for this evening.
I have a lot of favorite things about, about working in this district and with the people around us. But amongst those are, occasionally I'll get a note from a community member, from a parent, from a colleague that wants to recognize someone that, that really stood out and made a difference to them, made a difference for our students, made a difference for our community. And we do that through our Tradition of Excellence Awards. Tonight, we have two, and really decided to ask Nick Feit to come up and speak about his recommendation and why he put forward this team.
Hello, y'all. Thanks for having me here. I'm grateful to be here, honestly. I was just talking to Mrs. Wall a little, like, it's like the rite of passage. When I grew up, like, I wanted to get out of this town and never come back, right? Well, here I am, right? Sending my kids to the district because it's what it's all about up here. And I love this district, I love the sense of community, and I love the members of the staff. And Mrs. Wall is just that person. I don't know how to describe it. Like, when my daughter came here in the fourth grade, she had some issues in life, personal life and such, and Mrs. Wall just made her feel at home, you know? Even with having twins and like missing half the year, like, you know, Lila, she was just her favorite teacher. I don't know how to put it. And then, you know, life happens, it comes quick, and we've, we've had some difficulties to say the least. And my son has Mrs. Wall, and he, he loves going to school, you know what I mean? If you know Braden, like, I bumped into a teacher at, on a Halloween event at a completely different school, and she's like, you're brave, Dad, I just love him. He just runs up, gives people hugs, throws little heart emojis and stuff. He's just a pure joyful kid. And I felt like Mrs. Wall almost requested him, like, for his, her class, after experiencing Lila and just our family. And we went through some difficulties in life, and Mrs. Wall is more than a teacher, right? She, she took time out of her time to send letters to Lila to check on her, like. I just try not to tear up, because she's so cool and amazing as kids, and she's done so much. She's just so much more than a teacher for my children. And I just really admire her sense of community, and she's an amazing staff member, y'all have. I feel that's the importance of this district and what separates it from everybody else in the state. So I just really wanted to try to email Dr. Labor, and I emailed Mr. Robinson, and just wanted to really commend her and thank her for all she does for my family, let alone the school and district. Thank you.
So, Ms. Wall, we have a, for your desk, or for your, for your shelf, Tradition of Excellence Award. You guys put mine on, they have a picture.
It's all good? Well, thank you so much, so thank you.
Our second Tradition of Excellence Award is, was nominated by Ms. Nash, and she has recommended Ms. G. Turner.
I'm going to break public speaking rule number one and read, because sometimes they call for a bump. I nominated Angie Centeno for the Tradition of Excellence Award for her tireless leadership of our APs department. We are currently navigating implementation of MTSS, doing ACT prep sessions for students who are below benchmark, and adopting curriculum, all at the same time. It's a lot, but she has led our department making data-driven decisions while still keeping, you know, the rigor of a Highland education in the forefront. She's been collaborating with our peers in the social studies department to get them on board, to help us work with kids whose reading ability might need some help. She has spent countless hours looking through all of the curriculum and kind of do a lot of the legwork, so that we can come in and do more of the finite things. But also, we are making, also, we can make vast decisions for all of our students. And so the year's been overwhelming, to say the least, with so many new directives, but she's made it as smooth as we, as she can. And we're lucky to have her as a courageous leader, and an empathetic collaborator, and a creative problem solver, and a good colleague and friend. And so she understands what it means to live rich in tradition, but definitely not our student speakers.
All right, I think we have some excited presenters up next, and probably the reason most of you are here. So we will be turning this meeting over to them, because if I know our elementary schools, and Moier in particular, they're probably going to be doing all the work, so.
This is our broadcast crew. They wrote their messages to you today, and I'm getting out of the way.
Good morning. Today is Monday, February 12th, 2024. I'm Janie.
I'm Alejandra, and you're watching the Mustang News.
This is how we start most Fridays at Moier Elementary.
The hottest, the, the Mustang News program is the hottest news. The Mustang News is the hottest program that everyone looks forward to.
I'm Henry. Students have to wait until they're in fifth grade to create and perform the Mustang News.
I'm Lyndon. Each fifth grade class gets a chance to do the news for several weeks at a time while the other classes are entertained.
We are writers for the Mustang News. We piece together the news and write interesting stories about anything that happens at Moier. That even includes student-made videos and interviews.
On Mondays, we think about what news stories we should write, and on Thursdays, we do a run-through to make sure everything is ready for, for Friday.
My name is Callie. There are typically two announcers. Announcers are given the edited stories to practice on Thursday, so they can have it perfect by Friday.
Two people work on weekend weather. One person gives us the weather forecast, while the other chooses stories called weather around the world.
Two people work on sports center news. They usually report about popular sports states. They can choose other stories, such as college basketball, FCC news, or Highland Blue Lord scores.
Hi, my name is Aiyani.
And I'm Elise. We both help in the news in different ways.
I am Amanda, which is like an assistant teacher. I organize the scripts, make sure all the announcers don't want to start talking, and help with anything extra.
I change photos and play the videos on the computer while we live stream on YouTube Studio. We use a green screen along with the OBS program to add special features to make it interesting.
The funniest part of the Mustang News is the joke of the day.
It sounds something like this. What do you get when you cross fun with a Friday morning? What do you get when you cross fun with a Friday morning?
I don't know.
The Mustang News.
We do it every day. That's the Moier Mustang way. Put the Mustangs to the desk. We do it every day.
Have a great day.
Now let's check out some pictures of us working.
I was a favorite miss if I didn't introduce Mrs. Robinson, who she didn't want to speak, and she just wanted to be in the background. But she, it's hard. We've created all these leaders, which is what we want, but then you have a lot of opinions, and a lot of what should be in the news, and who should be in the news, and what you should say. And Ms. Robinson takes one of her free periods in the day to meet with them and try to hurt the cats and figure out how to make it all work. But she allows them to write and be creative, as you can see from their script today. So thank you, Mrs. Robinson, as well. And I think they have different areas to deal with.
Did, did I hear you guys correctly? Does this responsibility move around to the different fifth grade classes? So, it involves a lot of people, not just a few kids who do the broadcasting all year. You get to involve every fifth grade class, correct?
Yeah, she likes every, like, kind of monthly show, which, like, would put all three fifth grade classes.
So on Mondays, you decide, you get together and decide the news stories of the week, is that right? All right, so did you meet today?
Uh, yeah, we met today in practice.
Okay, so what's going to be?
Um, there's a new.
Oh, there's a new group, okay.
I imagine it would involve Taylor Swift.
What was the big news story last week? What was the big news story last week? What was the biggest one on the?
Uh, maybe the Super Bowl?
Super Bowl, yeah, that would be a good one.
Yeah, Lena, tell them what you said at the Super Bowl, on the Super Bowl story.
Do you remember?
Yeah, remember, like.
Did you pick the winner?
Yeah.
And that's what we all want.
Yeah, that's what we want.
I am very impressed, like, you guys are doing the broadcasting, you're not just reading from your sheet. You all look up as you're doing your presentation tonight. You can tell that you, you know, are in broadcasting mode. I saw some of you Saturday at Moyers Got Talent, so you're multi-talented in the, in the world of presenting. I'm, I'm very impressed. You guys are very good.
Nobody wants to pull a fight.
It's like competition. They like it when they have a script.
But it's nice, because there's other functions that it's maybe not so comfortable with the public speaking aspect of, that you can be like as a manager and doing things like that.
So I have two questions. One, what, what's your favorite part about doing the news broadcast?
My favorite part is probably interviewing, like, all the new teachers, and asking them, like, what's their favorite part?
My favorite part is working with her, and it's fun to work with her and, and first interviewing teachers.
My favorite part is probably preparing and writing my script for news.
My favorite part is probably learning more about sports.
My favorite part is interviewing, most likely, and writing, and getting to work with my partner.
My favorite part is either reviewing or writing the scripts.
My favorite part is working the camera.
My other question is, do I need to worry about snow tonight? I'm just making guesses, you'll be equally correct.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so I echo a couple of things that Doc, Doc Lieber talked about. Ms. Robinson is, is a great dynamo in, in the, in the resource, the Library and Media Center. When you go in there, it is a, it is a hive of activity, and these guys take it very serious, and they do a great job. It's so fun to watch. And you guys will have some opportunities if this is an area that you want to continue to develop. You won't find many districts that have as great of a, a broadcast program by the time you have a chance to go into high school, if you want to be a part of any part of it, so.
Well, I have to say thank you to the school for, for our brand-new school, that we were able to, they said, here's your space, what you want it to be, we want a green wall. Like, just paint the wall, so we don't have to do screens and all that. And then our technology department, they're always saying, what do you need, what do you need? We have awesome technology to work with, so. They are very lucky, because I tell them, if you, if you don't like it, then the news, don't sign up for it, it gets to something else. But if it's your thing, I mean, I think a few of them already know it's their thing, so.
Some great role models, and great teachers.
Well, you did a great job speaking in front of all of us, and all of them. So when you get, when you come to speak in front of us, you get a pretty shirt. Thank you, thank you, you did a great job.
Do we have any community forums, speakers, Mr. Faust? All right, thank you, Jody, for checking on that. All right, then, we will move into action items. So, first up, we will have staffing guidelines. Tell us about that.
Yeah, our first action item that we do each, each February is approve the staffing guidelines, so that our team at the district office can go to work on staffing allocations for, for each of our schools. So this is the first step in that process. We've been doing some of the work on, on projected enrollments going into next year. These guidelines, we do ask that you approve, and then I will give each of their schools their staffing guidelines by March 1st. And they have the month of March to work with their councils to, to return their requests for some of the staffing allocations. The only change that we have to, to our guidelines this year is, is in the area of library and media specialist in secondary programming. And this represents what our councils asked us to do last summer when we had a vacancy. So there still are two people that are assigned to the Highlands campus. One, so it says point five. One of those persons is serving in the role of library and media specialist. And then the other person is serving in the role as secondary instructional support. And then they're collaborating to work together. So same number of people as, as we had two library and media specialists, but they have slightly varied roles at the, at the middle of the line. That is the only change that from last year.
Great, all right. With that information, we do have a recommended motion. Great, alright, with that information, we do have a recommended motion of all, for approval of the staffing guidelines for a 24, 25 school year. So do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All those in favors? Aye. All those opposed? Right, motion is made. Next up, we have Jerry, Mr. Wissman, to share with us what's going on with facilities.
So we start tonight with Highlands roof replacement. As I indicated last week, we were hoping that kind of those nice warm days, and normally warm days with that view, we give them a chance to get in and take care of those few nagging little items with the roof, that has been done, so we can move into the phase of starting to close out that project. So, it will start tonight. We kind of, in terms of paperwork, we started last week where Mr. Robinson got to sign the warranty documents. So now that we're done, we're under warranty. We will have tonight a pay application for you, it is the final payout, it will pay us out at 100%. Then, next month, and maybe the month after, we'll start to have the official KDE documents, the BG4 and BG5. So...
We got a good test of like, three straight weeks of rain, didn't we?
We did, we did have a couple of little spots, but in this, you know, I notified them, they were out within the hour or so. We found that one of the complaints actually had nothing to do with roof. We had a water line leaking in a mechanical room up above, so it was more of a, you know, an internal issue. But they did find a couple of spots that they wanted to patch and clog and do some things with that day. And they will continue to monitor that specifically through the first year, and then we do have a 20-year manufacturer warranty on roof. So tonight, we have a pay application number eight, in the amount of $71,360, which, as I said, will pay out the amount at 100%.
Alright, so do I hear a motion for approval of that pay application at $71,360 to Inbus Roofing, for Highlands roof replacement?
Sure.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Moving into our guaranteed energy savings contract, and let us know what's going on with that.
As with this, we're kind of in the closing stages, there is still some control of work to do. And then once that is finalized, there'll be a little bit of retro commissioning work that has to be done. And that is something that will take place primarily at the high school and middle school, but may check on a few items at some of the other schools, where they did a little work, you know, with lighting and checking, and, you know, we kind of added a couple of things as we went along. Nothing that really added significant cost to the project, but something that CMTA thought would be beneficial to us and to the overall performance of building and energy savings. So, Brian and I are going to meet with Pam Girkin from CMTA Thursday morning, briefly, just to kind of get a final little impression on kind of what she thinks we have left, so we can start getting in that path of finishing this one out. We do have pay application number 11, which, any questions? Before we do that?
No, we've discussed this, and it seems, obviously, we're already seeing returns, and at the promised rate, if not more than the promised rate, so seems to be successful. With that, are we ready for this motion? The recommended motion is approval of pay application 11 to CMTA Incorporated, in the amount of $47,477.27 for the guaranteed energy savings contract program. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's taken.
Yep, Jerry's still up.
Yep.
We're down to discussion items, so we have no official action on, but we did want to update, and then I know that Mr. Robinson has some information as well. So, the project started back in December, primarily with declaring a brush in trees. There's still a couple of large trees that they have to take down, but they're going to wait until, you know, an appropriate time to do that, and have a tree company handle that. Most of the small brush, they just sort of went in and ripped out, ripped over and hauled away. Duke Energy has come in and done their work to relocate the power leading back into Sargent Avenue neighborhood. So that work is complete. Spectrum has started their work. They started with a little bit of work late last week and this week. They're projecting it's going to be three, four weeks worth of work, that they'll be onsite. And a lot of what they have to do, because of the route they're taking, they won't even kind of be right by the facility, because they're kind of coming in a different section, following a different path. They will ultimately get up by the parking lot and then wrap around, and then do a little bit of work over by the current Sargent Avenue. But the majority of their work is running completely new path. We still do not have a start date for Alt Fiber. They seem to be taking things rather slowly. Unfortunately, that kind of has us in a little bit of a holding pattern, but I discussed with Rigler Blacktop today, and we spoke with Joe Hayes, and he was going to talk with Justin Verch from VIOX about seeing what work, because Rigler wants to get started, so they're looking for a path that they can get moving, doing their work, that won't be impacted by the work that Spectrum and Alt Fiber still have to do. So, the original plan was to wait till they were done, but we all thought they'd be done by now. Since they're not, they're trying to come up with a plan that will allow Rigler to get in there, because they're ready to go, they would love to have been there last week. So, officially, we're in a little bit of a holding pattern, but we're putting pressure on the utility companies, and Justin's trying to figure out a way that they can get in and get started and not impact the neighborhood, and not impact Spectrum and Alt Fiber in their building to do that work.
Couple other updates related to the Tower Park project. One, to kind of piggyback on some of what Jerry said, once Rigler does start some of the earth movement, that will be the first road closure portion. So remember what we talked about, that there would always be, in addition to Delta, in addition to Delta, there would always be access into that neighborhood, either by the VA hospital or through River Road. In the first part of this project, they would very likely be closing off the River Road access, so we're working to make sure we give good prior notice to that. We did meet with our architect and started to make sure that we were ready to go for what we hope to be recommendation to start a project after mid, in April. So we have a target date, that we're very hopeful that at the April board meeting, we can present to you something to send out for bid for the second part of the project. We have selected April, because the type of project or the extent, or if there's, if it needs to be phased in any way, in some ways, is dependent on legislative action. All signs are positive for bonding capacity and facility funds and things along those lines, and work on a couple of things. In fact, tomorrow, very blessed to be joining, Matt Kramer's going to join us in Frankfurt, and we're going to meet with some legislators to speak about potentially some support of that project. I think I said, we did meet with soccer teams to start talking about the impact it would have this fall on that season. And as you all know, initially, we had thought we would start in October, with just missing a track season. The more we looked at it in terms of cost impact and timing, starting in June or July, it would be significantly more advantageous on us for both pricing as well as avoiding potential delays. So we're working backwards for that. And then finally, I'm really pleased to announce, and I've alluded to this a couple of times, but St. Elizabeth and Orthocinci are joining us as private partners in this project. We're finalizing some things with Orthocinci, they've been great for us, but we've actually received our initial check from St. Elizabeth towards the project. So between the two of them, St. Elizabeth over five years and Ortho over 10, we have the very generous donation of about a million dollars that will support that project. Some advertising and stuff worked into it, and that sponsorship, but it's really great to have some new people supporting us.
Are we going to do any official recommendations of that before the project is over?
Yeah, I would love to have a groundbreaking before we start the project, and have those who've, because the foundation has worked with us, the city has worked with us. You know, we're hopeful that the legislators will have worked with us, in addition to St. Elizabeth and Ortho.
So maybe a groundbreaking early summer?
Yeah, or maybe May, maybe late May even. That's the hope.
Jerry, excited?
Excited.
Do you get any feedback from residents back there, or if that project moves along, can you just let us know?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just make sure they're...
That's been, obviously, you know, meeting with those groups, talking with those groups, getting feedback, talking about best ways to communicate, what you mentioned, the closures. There will always be, you know, a set amount of open access areas, so that is definitely in the forefront of our thoughts.
I think they did a good job of Matt getting all the notifications out in front, we probably want to make sure we just continue that throughout this thing.
Absolutely. We've updated some of the website, we have some photographs and before pictures up there, and we'll continue to, I think drone pictures are up there now, right? So there's some drone stills.
Feel good that Alt Fiber will show up?
Eventually.
Do you need to talk to them a little bit?
Mike.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm talking like a Martin Scorsese. Alright, thank you, Mr. Wissman.
You're welcome.
I think, next up, and I promise not to sing, you're going to talk to us about the solar eclipse.
Yes, yes, I'd love to get interested. The solar eclipse is, and this will be one of the first communications that we have in a public manner, and we'll start to get some communication as the month comes forward. We are just outside the line of totality for the solar eclipse. The next time it is this close to us in the line of totality is 2099. So it's going to be a little bit of time. Dayton, Middletown is really where you see most of it going across North America. It is scheduled to be the very day we come back from spring break, on April 8th, at 3:08 is the peak time for our region. So some of the partial eclipse starts before, and then it carries after. The time where it would be the most dark and most tempting to stare at the sun is right around elementary dismissal. And so, we do have intention currently to dismiss our secondary programs at normal times, 2:45, gives about 25 minutes, and we may actually dismiss a few minutes earlier, that's still under conversation. Give a little bit of time to make sure that we do so safely. Elementary, there's no real good way to make sure, in terms of departure, that students wouldn't stare at the sun. And so, we're going to do that in a very safe way. So, Mr. Faust has actually ordered glasses for all of our elementary students.
He doesn't have them here to model? I was promised there would be some. While we were playing total eclipse in the heart.
I tried them on today, they work.
They work? You stared at a light one.
I stared at Brian's head, I stared, you know...
Oh, they understood that.
They do it pretty cool.
So we are actually going to hold our elementary students until 3:30 on that day. So it will be, it will be a little bit longer, just to make sure that we have safe viewing, that dismissal doesn't overlap. We'll have a communication that asks families to opt in to that experience, and so if students, if families would prefer that they not, we'll have ways to make sure that they're attended to as well. And then if families do want to pick up at 3 o'clock, and they choose to do so, we'll have some procedures in place for that as well. Just wanted to start that communication and discussion, I think it'll be an exciting day, but it also has some differences.
Yeah, and that's just kind of a tricky time with the day being the day we come back from spring break. So making sure, starting now, and communicating that in various ways, because it'll be easy to forget, because, yeah.
When does the letter go out?
Probably the end of February, the first time. So I'll send an email across the district, or our team will, we'll send it across the district in February. And then I envision our elementary, well, all of our principals to have it in their newsletter, probably weekly, going into March. And then probably send one more final, "Welcome back from spring break" reminder.
Get to be here longer.
Yeah, well, in elementary, sometimes, when I say bonus school, they're a little bit more okay than that.
What better way to do that, so much of friends?
Alright, next up, I didn't hear that, but I will talk to you later. We have our board committee updates, does anybody have anything to share at this time? I know, just a reminder, because I guess we'll have one more meeting, but the due date for sports Hall of Fame nominations is March 15th. That information is on the Highlands Athletic Department website, so go there if you're interested. 20 years post-graduation for individuals and teams, or is 10 years, I believe. So, and coaches five. So, you know, a lot of great people to celebrate, different sports, different decades. Do, you know, think about that and reach out to them, March 15th. By March 15th. Anybody else come to any one? And Clem mentioned the Parents Night Out, so just another reminder of that. The NESTEs are coming up in April as well, so as far as things that relate to the education foundation. Alright, so I think that takes us to approval of the consent agenda. Alright, so as you can see there, all board members having had the opportunity to review and peruse, or pursue any questions about the items contained therein, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, so I think that's it.
Yeah, the only other business I would encourage is, we are in the midst of our general assembly, and so staying engaged with some of the suggestions and recommendations often, which impact schools. I would encourage people to do so. That will resolve in some ways as we get closer to the spring for our budget and salary committees to start to meet and respond to where we are from a funding standpoint. and salary committees to start to meet and respond to where we are from a funding standpoint.
Alright, yes, as a former government teacher, I would always encourage you to be involved with your elected officials, especially areas that relate to education in our district. So I think that is the close for our evening. If I strike this. Alright, we are adjourned at 7:21.